Commissioners, if you'd find your seats. All right, we're going to call to order the recess meeting of December 10th, 2025. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Mr. Beck, Mr. Chauncey.
Here.
Commissioner Eversol.
Here.
Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Hilton.
Here.
Dr. Highlander.
Here.
Dr. Mackey. Dr. Mackey.
Here.
Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Commissioner Shipley.
Here.
Chairman Smith.
Here. Thank you. We have an invocation and pledge. Everybody would please rise. We have Bishop Kevin Wallace here with us this evening from Redemption to the Nation's Church to give our invocation, then I will do the pledge.
Let's all bow our heads. Father, we thank you for the grace and the life of another day. We're grateful, Lord, for these leaders that are in this room tonight, and we ask God that you would guide them as they guide our city. We believe the Psalmist who said, unless the Lord build the house, they labor in vain, who build it? And unless the Lord watch over the city, the watchmen watch in vain. So tonight we'll do what we can do, but God, we are trusting you to do what only God can do. We're inviting you into this room and into the deliberation for our county and our communities. I pray for all of our deputies, all of our servicemen and women, our mayor, our commissioners. I bless all of them and their families, and I pray that our deliberations tonight would bring you great glory. In Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. If you please face the flag, render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to the states, to the nation, to God, to this law, to the people, to the justice of the world. All right, Madam Clerk, I'm showing zero recessed items. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, we will now adjourn the recess meeting. We'll now go into our December 10th agenda session. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Beck, Commissioner Chauncey.
Here.
Commissioner Eversol.
Here.
Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Hilton.
Here.
Dr. Highlander.
Here.
Dr. Mackey.
Here.
Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Commissioner Shipley.
Here.
Chairman Smith.
Here. Thank you. We have two presentations on our agenda this evening. The first one is from about our Hamilton County Fair. Ms. Justatt, would you like to come forward and give us that presentation?
So that. Thank you so much. First of all, that did take a village and to produce, but also that video was produced by the folks behind me, which is Dynamo Kids and Songbirds, super talented folks. So you'll get a chance to talk to them here in just a second. But I wanted to to take this opportunity to talk about how grateful I am, share a brief recap of this year's Little Debbie Hamilton County Fair, a tremendous success for and a milestone for the team that brought it to life. First, I want to extend a heartfelt thanks to the agencies whose coordination and professionalism ensure ensure it is safe, smooth, welcoming experience experience for thousands of families. The Office of Emergency Management, Hazmat EMS, Hamilton County Sheriff's Office, Tennessee Highway Patrol, Sail Creek Fire Department, TDOT, public works departments such as county maintenance and highway, and so many others played a vital role in the planning and execution of this event. Their partnership is the backbone of an event this size, and we truly are fortunate for their service. A very special acknowledgement to Hamilton County Parks and Recreation. The staff and public, excuse me, the staff served the public with pride from early morning until long after the gates closed. Their dedication is the reason that McDonald Farm continues to shine as a destination for the community. I also want to thank U County Commission for your continued support, guidance, and belief in what the farm means to Hamilton County. And of course, our community partners whose generosity not only elevates this event year after year, but also allows families to enjoy a family-friendly and affordable event. Little Debbie, Hamilton County Government, Coca-Cola, Dr. Pepper, EPB, Kabota Chattanooga Food City, TVFCU, of course, new the Tennessee Entertainment Commission are just some of the partners that are generous to this event. It is because of these dedicated partners who share the vision of Hamilton County coming together in celebration that we are able to keep this event affordable and accessible for all. And finally, Mayor Womp. Your leader, his leadership and commitment to ensuring that the fair reflects the very best of what Hamilton County has to offer. I'm very proud to announce today the attendance from this year's fair. We're a little over 51,000 people over three days. Thank you so much. This is a reflection of strong planning, strong partnerships, strong and a strong public enthusiasm for what we're building here together. So thank you all for your continued support as we work together to grow and continue to expand this event and for what parks and for our parks and our families. So. And I've opened any questions. Of course, Dynamo folks are here, so I'd love to highlight them as well, but anything we can do to highlight this event is just it's just a pleasure.
Commissioner Beck, I see your lights, sir.
Yeah, so what did this, the increase over last year's amount?
Great question. So last year we did see a dip. So the first year in 2020, the fair has been going on for a little over 30 years, and the attendance was typically about six or seven, five, it's five to 7,000 over the weekend. In 2023, our attendance was a little over 40,000. In 2024, our attendance was 36,500. And so, of course, this year, this this attendance is definitely an increase.
Thank you. And just one more thing. I didn't I didn't see a picture of Mayor Womp on the horse. I didn't see.
I've got one right there.
Ma'am.
I've got one right there.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
My pleasure. Yeah, this this picture does reflect we I brought it because it does reflect the size of the crowd that day on Saturday.
Commissioner Highlander.
Thank you, Chairman. Karen, you did a wonderful job. I'll I'll admit, I spent more time at the Ag Barns than I did anywhere else, but but it was very good. It just and we are so blessed to have you and a lot of the other county staff people, but you just did a wonderful job. And and we appreciate the night before when the children had the Fund for Excellence, that was wonderful. That was a blessing. It was an excitement for them and encouraged them to make money for their schools. Thank you so much.
It's my pleasure. That Thursday night before the fair, we did open it up to kids that had sold, for those that don't know, sold coupon books. It was a great success. I think we had about 1,000 folks show up that night. And so we're really, we're excited to have been able to accommodate that and hope that we're able to to continue that going forward. My pleasure.
Good, sir. Commissioner Baker.
Well, Karen, you pulled it off again. I can't help but think about all that wonderful training you had over all those years, but I just want to congratulate you and the county as a whole. Because, you know, you couldn't do it without a great leader like yourself and a great commitment from the county. So the bird has flown the coop. So congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Baker, Commissioner.
Commissioner Mackey.
Thank you, Chair. Karen, great job. Great job. I do have one question. If one were to get into their car right here, it's 32 miles to get up to the farm. I'm curious as to people who live on that direction from here. Is there a way to track what part of the county people are coming from?
Yes, we this this is another slide that I have here that talks about where folks are driving in from. And so, I mean, we're like 90% within where it's very much a local event. Most folks are coming in from Chattanooga by a big percentage. We also, last year, we had four countries. This year, it's one in two tickets at a time, but it still counts. So folks are definitely traveling in from those distances. But I'm open to some focus groups and some discussions to talk about if it hasn't been brought up to us, but if there's ways to help.
Yeah, I'm I'm curious. People who live in Lookout Valley, East Ridge, East, are they coming? You know, to what extent are they participating?
They are. Yeah, we had 300 and 10 cities attend this event, and I'm sure Lookout is on there, but of course, we can go and we can I can granulate this information based on our ticket so that you can, we can give you some reporting on that.
Thank you, ma'am.
My pleasure.
Good, sir. Commissioner Shipley.
I'm going to echo a little bit of Highlander. Thank you so much. I mean, it's wonderful. And and what you do up there putting together with your staff with the mayor's office, and I watch you. I'm there. And you've done an excellent job. I mean, a job that this commission, this county, be proud of you for what you've done. Thank you.
All right, I have no further lights. Karen, as always, thank you so much. And gentlemen, thank you for the video. Great work. I'm sure it took an awful lot of times. I appreciate your interest and your involvement in putting that together for us. Thank you very much. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we'll move on to our next presentation, Hamilton County Schools Capital Improvements. Mr. Keane, the mic is yours, sir.
So hello, everybody. Chairman Smith, Commissioners, Gary Keane, District Nine, and Chairman of the Facility Committee. We've got a video we're going to show you. I'd like to thank you beforehand. This was a very successful partnership that we had with you all, with the mayor and the county government and with our school board. And we felt like with this amount of money that was out there, a total of 260 million going toward new schools, renovating schools, but then also a little over 60 million toward capital projects and maintenance of our buildings, we felt like it would be good to put it to pictures for you to let you see. You've gotten a handout of the four different phases that we went through over the last couple of years. We want you to know we were diligent in making sure that we met needs in all districts. And we did a lot with this money, and we really appreciate the partnership and hope that in the future, we'll have this opportunity again to go with you. So we've got a short little four-minute video. It gives a little bit of time for you to watch, and so you can kind of see some of the things that have been done. These handouts you should have received previously. I'm sure you saw them, and and these were all brought forth to you and approved by you after we approved them at the board. So again, thank you for that, and we'll take a minute to watch. And we have a wonderful photographer in Olivia Ross that worked real hard and did a lot of driving to get those pictures. There would have could have been a lot more pictures on there. There were probably the two areas that took the largest amount of this capital projects were roofs and chillers and heaters. So that took a lot. But we got we got to really put a dent in the MGT report needs that we had in some of our buildings that without this bond money, we would not have been able to do. So again, we thank you, and we hope we know there's a timeframe, but we hope in the future we'll be able to meet again and have a great partnership again and go forth with another bond. So if you have any questions, be happy to try to answer them. And I have great support. Dr. Sharp, our Assistant Superintendent over Buildings is here, and also our Director Justin Witt over Maintenance.
All right, Mr. Keane, I don't have any lights yet. I do have a couple of questions, but first, it's always good to see Commissioner Sharp's younger brother visiting us in the audience. Actually, let me go to these lights first. Commissioner Baker, I see your lights, sir.
Now, Gary, I'd just like to thank you for the way you frame this. Not only is it are you updating us, but you're doing it in the spirit of partnership.
Yes.
Which quite often, having been on that side and this side, it doesn't necessarily happen. So I'd just like to congratulate you on your approach.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Highlander.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Baker pretty well took the words out of my mouth, but I do appreciate the partnership, and I know Commissioner Graham is our U Education Chair, and I'm sure he'll get together. We'd made some plans to get together with you, and I'm sure he'll follow through with that. But thank you for your hard work.
Yep, we've had conversations on that already.
Great, thank you.
Good, sir. Commissioner Shipley.
Oh, thank you, man. Very fair about this. Looking over it, it did work in every district. It was isolated. Everybody got a piece of the pie. I would like to get more pie, but it didn't. No, I am very pleased with what I got from this, and it was done very fair. You just looked at that sheet and watched that. Every district got got treated fairly. Thank y'all for that.
Thank you. We were diligent about trying to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Keane, one one quick follow-up question, sir. On the timing, I noticed that the sheet had multiple phases, one, two, and three. When when do you expect completion of all the projects that are listed?
I'm going to turn to Dar, probably Justin Witt and let him ask that. And there there are a few things that we've already run things, but I'll let him.
Mr. Witt.
Thank you, Chairman Smith. So the question was the completion on the full 60 million. Is that correct?
Yeah, and all the phases. Like, there's some projects on here. Some of the photos showed they were done. Some were
Right.
in process and some probably not started yet. I was just curious.
The largest challenge is a lot of these projects, we have to time and hit that eight-week window called summer that keeps getting shorter and shorter. So a lot of that determines the schedule, but roughly, I mean, I think we're probably a year, at least a year, maybe even two years for a complete $60 million or completion. This is probably this is this is three times the workload that has come through my office since I've been here in 17 years, and we've been able to maintain our same staff levels. So again, I just asked, you know, we're doing some good work. I think we've had a good start, but again, just be patient. Let us do some good quality work here and get these get these wrapped up. But I would think a year.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much. I was just curious what what kind of what that plan looked like. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Keane, one final question. Do you mind sending that presentation out to the rest of us?
No, matter of fact, is it Patricia?
Sitting right in front of you. She can manage.
Yes, yes, we got a copy of it to her, and I think she'll be able to send that out to you.
Perfect.
All right.
All right, gentlemen, thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, moving on. We'll be looking at minutes from our December 3rd Agenda and Regular Meeting, and we will also be looking at entering one report into the record. So that takes us to resolutions. So let's get started. Madam Clerk, please read 1225-12.
Resolution 1225-12, a resolution to approve and accept applications for notary public positions, the bonds and oaths of notaries previously elected, and the oath of deputy sheriff.
See the lights? We'll take that up next week. 1225-13, please.
Resolution 1225-13, a resolution to appoint one member to the Citizens Advisory Board for Recreation for a two-year term, beginning December 17th, 2025, and ending December 17th, 2027. This will appoint Jamie Fairbanks.
Thank you. Lights? We'll take that up next week. 1225-14, please.
Resolution 1225-14, a resolution making an appropriation to East Hamilton High School in the amount of $1,600 from general fund tribal discretionary monies as allotted to District Seven.
See the lights? We'll take that up next week. 1225-15, please.
Resolution 1225-15, a resolution authorizing the county clerk to renew a maintenance agreement and amend a payment processing agreement with I Three Verticals LLC, DBA Business Information Systems to continue providing annual licensing, maintenance, and payment card processing for the county clerk's motor vehicle registration and miscellaneous tax systems for an additional five years, expiring June 30th, 2030, and authorizing the county clerk to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Graham, I see your lights, sir.
Yeah, if I could ask
Please.
a question. This is a five-year contract, but if there's need to be changes, I mean, is it in one-year increments?
making this, this decision and it coming before this board for approval. And was asked that we kind of stand down and kind of let's give it some time, let's work together on it. And I don't see us making any headway. I really don't. And when, when you think about my prior world from here, if you have a organization that says they're planners, then their job is to plan. Their job is to help guide this board up here for the future, to help guide us to something that future generations will be proud of. And what, what I kind of envision, uh, if we, uh, if we make this move, which I hope we do, and create our own Hamilton County Planning Commission, is that we'll still, the RPA will still represent us at the RPA level. And anything that goes through them will come to the region, to the Hamilton County Planning Commission, uh, before it comes to this board. But kind of what I think the responsibility of the planning commission's role is, is I think when, when it comes to this body, and, and this is kind of my confusing part. When I came to this role, I always thought that when it came to this body, that the Regional Planning Commission would come to this body and say, you know, there's a development that we've approved to come to this body. But in order for this approved zoning change to be successful, here's what you need to do as a county in the future. Whether it be like the next five years, if, if, if there's going to be a development come in that there needs to be some road widening, that we would know that upfront. I think that if it came to the point that there was going to be a development come in and this, this body was being presented for a development, and it was going to mean that maybe there was going to be more students in a school than that would be brought to this body and say, you know, this development is an eight-year project, 10-year project, X number of homes. It's something that you better put on your plate is if this project gets done, with this being 2025, if it's completed in 2033, the school system that you have around this development, if you don't make plans to expand an elementary school or build a new elementary, elementary school or expand a middle school or high school, then you're going to be behind. Um, and same thing with fire protection. I think we've been leaving all that out. And to me, it just, it's just amazing that we have to have growth because this is not about stopping growth. We have to have growth. But we have to have it in a way to where we protect what we've built. We've got to have it in a way to where we, we create a safe environment for those that already, already are here. We've got to create an environment to where students have a facility to go to school and have the right student pupil population in a classroom. Uh, we owe it to the general public that, that, that we ensure that there's proper safety measures in place. Uh, and that would include fire protection. You know, we're, we're a county that, we're blessed that we have people. And we are, we're truly blessed in unincorporated Hamilton County that we have people that, that volunteer their time, that will work a full-time job 40 hours a week, and they'll have a alarm go off on a radio to tell them that somebody in their neighborhood or in their community is in need, and they'll get up from their sleep, or they'll walk away from a ballgame or walk away from the dinner table and come to our need. And they don't charge the county a dime. Now, the county does give money to these services and we're proud of them. That's because I think they do a great job. But I think all this has got to come together. We can't just keep saying, build, 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 without understanding the consequences for our actions. And something my grandmother told me a long time ago, there's a consequence for your action, whether it be positive or negative. There's always a consequence. And I think, I think for so long, we've kicked the same can down the road that we're, the true definition of insanity is what? You expect something different, but you're not willing to change what you're doing. And I think for, as far as this board, if we want to see things different in the unincorporated, if we want to, to have the unincorporated parts of the county truly, uh, to, to be a focus point, uh, since that's really our main role is the unincorporated parts of the county. Because that's the main community piece of it, um, then, uh, then it's time for a change. It's time for us to, to look at this a little different. I don't, don't, I won't point the finger at the current planning commission. It's not about that. You know, current planning commission's done a great job for many, many years, but it's time we take a new direction. To me, it's time we take a different step. And it's time that we, uh, we look at things different than we've been looking at it. And appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. I would like to have a few more words at the end.
Absolutely. Let's go to a few of these lights. Commissioner Mackey.
Thank you, Chair. With all due respect, if it's not broken, let's not try to fix it. For the last year, there has been a major push to stop growth in Hamilton County. Initially, we had one group, Regional Planning. They are the ones who pretty much approved whether we were going to grow or not. Then there came a group nine months ago, and then they wanted to create two separate regional planning groups. One for the city and then another for the county. That was turned down. And then that same group came back again and said, look, let every district decide for itself if they were going to grow. That was turned down, and I'm glad that it was. Now, somebody made that comment about build, build, build. But what I would say, and I think every single commissioner here would say the same thing, if you're not growing, if you are not growing, you're going to get taxed. Ask, ask the people you trust, if you don't grow, if you're not building, will it result in your taxes growing, getting bigger? And, uh, some of us have said that's the last thing we want to do. I'm looking at commissioners and I know many of us are very much opposed to a tax increase. So we have a choice. 20 years ago, we were losing population. And there were a couple of clear-minded people who said, yes, let's take the steps so Volkswagen will come here. And the choice was either continue to lose population, which would result in your property declining in value, or you could bring more people in. And Hamilton County has had a critical point that we're continuing to bring jobs. But the people who are taking those jobs, we need a place for them, an affordable place where they can live. We need a community where, when your children and grandkids graduate from high school, that they can afford to move out of your basement and out of your homes and buy their own property. So as far as I'm concerned, Regional Planning has done a good job. They've called balls and strikes. They haven't taken an anti-position one way or the other, but they've done, I think, the right thing. And as a consequence, Hamilton County is doing very well, and I want to continue on that path without a tax increase. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Highlander.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I respect Dr. Mackey and his opinion. And one thing that, that really concerns me and I think should concern most everyone else. When I first came on the, the commission four years ago, I got appointed for a year and then, then was elected. I was told constantly, infrastructure, build and the infrastructure will catch up. Build and the infrastructure will catch up. And finally, some of the people that told me admitted that's not the case. We have infrastructure needs. And, and, and I appreciate the mayor's putting together a, an unincorporated roads committee and group to, and put some money into that. It's 5.8 million. I think we're 150 million behind in roads now. But we have, uh, Commissioner Eversol mentioned the schools, and you can't build a school after 300 or 400 homes are, are, are added. You've got a plan ahead. And, and I think that's, that's what we need to do. The infrastructure is what holds us back. I, I think we need to be responsible. I, I'm not against growth, but I think it needs to be responsible growth, not unlimited growth. And, and I too, Dr. Mackey, want to keep taxes down. I do. And I want houses to be affordable. In a meeting the other day, I asked, uh, one of the gentleman mentioned affordable housing. I said, what are you talking about affordable housing? He said, well, about $450,000. Well, that's not too affordable for most young families. But that's, the average cost of a house is now about $400,000 for a new one. And, and I, I certainly want some affordable housing. Right now, most of the housing we've got, in my area at least, is not affordable for young families. And I want it to be. I, I agree with you. I want it to be affordable. But I think we need to let the infrastructure catch up. And I believe we have different problems in the unincorporated part of the county than they have in the city of Chattanooga. And so I, I agree with Commissioner Eversol. I believe it would be a good program to go into. Thank you, Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir.
I'm not going to try to add to or take away anything Commissioner Eversol say it needs right on the money. But I am going to say something that's a little harsh and I don't care because I'm gonna call it like it is. The attitude toward the planning commission at times is not the kind of attitude I like to see government take toward the public. And I've come to planning commission meetings, and it's like some of the people set up here are above the people we serve. I don't like that. And I think that that has put such taste in people now for the reason they would like to see a change. Now, at the same time, I'll let him say, Daisy, I shouldn't be making the decision what happens on Broad Street. And somebody on the planning commission that lives on Broad Street cannot tell people in Cell Creek, Birchwood, how they should live. We're not equipped to live the way the people in CJ Chattanooga do. We don't have stores. We don't have buses, bus routes. We cannot help people like the kind down here. So if you want to back it in, back it in downtown, leave us alone. That's it.
Let's keep it down, keep it down. All right, Commissioner Mackey, I see your light again, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, Chairman, the only problem that I'm hearing is the outline areas want the city of Chattanooga to pay for their roads. They don't want to reflect the, the values of the community. And my attitude is, if you want that beautiful view, do you ask the government to buy it for you? My thinking is, the city of Chattanooga, you're wanting to dump on them. You want to dump on them and take their money for the benefit of the outline areas. That ain't right. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Baker.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we've obviously gone through the planning process. I think what my understanding is the, with the RPC, it's about two-thirds city issues and about a third county. And so it would, it would make a lot of sense to have 100% of a committee reflect 100% of who they represent and the other 100% represent who they represent. Um, because there are differences. Um, we've got a plan. The question is, you know, how do you carry it out with the, with the best needs of the respective areas? We've got a plan. Um, you know, I, I love the, the, the question, the comment. You know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. My comment is, if you don't like change, you'll hate all of us. And I just think that this is a great win-win for all of us. We've got a plan. We create the right planning commission, um, that reflects the constituents. Thank you.
All right, I see no further lights. Commissioner, oh, yes, I do. Commissioner Sharp.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I'm just kind of wrapping my head around this proposal right now as everyone's speaking. So I've written down a few notes. And I'm sure I'll have more to say tomorrow or next week. I'm sorry. Those of us who live in the city of Chattanooga, city of Red Bank, other municipalities on the south end of the county do not seem to receive any empathy with regard to the challenges that they face. There's a lot of ways that different communities address growing pains, which is what we're experiencing, right? Not unusual growing pains, um, but much of our growth has taken place.
All right. Commissioner Mackey, I see your light again, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, Chairman, the only problem that I'm hearing is the outline areas want the city of Chattanooga to pay for their roads. They don't want to reflect the values of the community. And my attitude is, if you want that beautiful view, do you ask the government to buy it for you? My thinking is the city of Chattanooga, you're wanting to dump on them. You want to dump on them and take their money for the benefit of the outline areas. That ain't right. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Baker.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we've obviously gone through the planning process. I think what my understanding is the, with the RPC, it's about two-thirds city issues and about a third county. And so, it would make a lot of sense to have 100% of a committee reflect 100% of who they represent, and the other 100% represent who they represent. Because there are differences. We've got a plan. The question is, you know, how do you carry it out with the with the best needs of the respective areas? We've got a plan. You know, I love the the question, the comment. You know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. My comment is, if you don't like change, you'll hate all of us. And I just think that this is a great win-win for all of us. We've got a plan. We create the right planning commission that reflects the constituents. Thank you.
All right. I see no further lights. Commissioner, oh, yes, I do. Commissioner Sharp.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm just kind of wrapping my head around this proposal right now as everyone's speaking, so I've written down a few notes. And I'm sure I'll have more to say tomorrow or next week. I'm sorry. I've had a lot of conversations recently about many of these concerns. And I empathize with many of these concerns. What I struggle with is how those of us who live in the city of Chattanooga, city of Red Bank, other municipalities on the south end of the county do not seem to receive any empathy with regard to the challenges that they face. There's a lot of ways that different communities address growing pains, which is what we're experiencing, right? Not unusual growing pains, but much of our growth has taken place. Much of our unincorporated growth has taken place in specific areas of the county, which is challenging. But the reason that's happened is because that's where we had sewer. Over the last three years, we've done nothing to expand sewer in Hamilton County. Nothing. We could be growing in other areas of the county at a slower rate to satisfy the timing needed to provide infrastructure to meet the needs of this growing community. We've done nothing to expand sewer. My colleague from District Four mentions it at every opportunity. When are we gonna start talking about sewer access in Hamilton County? We haven't done it. I'm not sure where the leadership is on this. But this is a tremendous shortcoming. It's frustrating to me. We have alternative methods to addressing wastewater with decentralized systems. No. We're not gonna do that either. It's too expensive with regulation. For a community that prides itself of being conservative values, we've regulated ourselves out of building houses. It's frustrating. $450,000 may not be an affordable house for a lot of people getting started. But typically, the person who purchases that $450,000 house is moving out of a $350,000 house. And the person that, in order for them to move out of that $350,000 house, they've got to sell it to somebody that's moving out of a $250,000 house for every real estate transaction that takes place. Typically, there are nine to 11 additional transactions that have to take place in order for that to work. So, when someone builds a million-dollar home, eventually, that opens up a starter home for someone. It's, we've got to get out of this siloed thought process. All of these issues are intertwined. It's an ecosystem of economic activity that we have to think, consider all of the different variables. May I ask Lee Brown or a question?
Absolutely.
Mr. Brown, have we ever conducted a tax equity study in Hamilton County government?
Not. I don't know that officially. I'm not aware of any being done. There have been studies done of duplicate services. There have been studies done of expenditures by the county that only affect, for instance, outside of municipal ranges. But no, I don't recall anything done specifically for a tax equity study.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's something that maybe we should consider. And it was mentioned before that we have over a billion-dollar budget in Hamilton County government. We do, and about 600 million of it goes to Hamilton County schools, which is used by families all over the county. Another 400 million or so, which is very similar to the city of Chattanooga's budget, covers the rest of Hamilton County operations. I'd be really interested to know how much of that revenue comes from the city of Chattanooga, East Ridge, city of Red Bank, and how much of it is expended in other areas. Talking about you keep doing the same thing and expecting a different result is insanity. Well, I've said 100 times, we've got to talk about, and people agree. We have to talk about new revenue streams to address these infrastructure issues. Last three years, we've had really zero substantive conversation to talk about how we can expand our efforts to improve roads, sewers, even really schools for that matter. We've issued a large bond, the largest bond that we've ever issued for school facilities, but it's the same thing we've always done. Just a larger number. But everything costs more, too. I agree. We need to do things differently. There are many communities that look at improved patrol districts for enhanced sheriff services in unincorporated areas, improved fire districts for more densely populated, unincorporated areas, improved road districts for more densely populated, unincorporated areas. Across the nation, these tools are used to enhance our ability to improve infrastructure. And I think that that's got to be part of this conversation. But not just the approval of a development or not approving a development. Approving the density of a development or reducing the density of a development. It's got to go beyond that. I could get on board with a conversation about how we address infrastructure development across all of Hamilton County, particularly in unincorporated areas of Hamilton County. You know, it was said a minute ago that folks from unincorporated Hamilton County shouldn't sit up here and tell folks in the city of Chattanooga, you know, how to operate their businesses. But that's exactly what happened in this room last week when I proposed that we loan money to the city of Red Bank, that they would pay back. That they would pay back because of a failure in systems and processes. But that, we were told, no. folks in unincorporated Hamilton County feel pretty comfortable telling folks in municipal Hamilton County how we should spend our tax dollars in unincorporated Hamilton County. That's frustrating to me. You know, I've said multiple times, and I don't, you know, I don't know. I don't know what the answers are. I'm happy to have those conversations. I don't think that we can come to a resolution, in my opinion, that I'm comfortable supporting over the course of a week. But I am happy to have those conversations. I would participate in a committee to discuss how we move forward. I would happily do that. I think certain areas can be looked at differently, and maybe they should be looked at differently. But there are mechanisms for doing that. It's called incorporation. If Walden Ridge would like to have a different set of rules, they can incorporate and create their own rules. I don't know that that's the answer, but there are multiple ways to address the issues. This, I understand the desire to have this conversation. And I see a place where we can have a productive conversation over this. And maybe I'm a little disturbed after the occurrences of last week, which makes it more challenging for me to have an open mind about it. But I'm willing to consider it. I think the points that I brought up need to be looked into. I think we should have a tax equity study done throughout all of Hamilton County to see where our tax dollars are coming from and where they're going to. I think that's something that would be very helpful in determining how we address these issues. I think it'd be very helpful for a lot of us on this board to understand that. I don't have a synopsis of my thoughts. As I said, I was just writing notes down and kind of speaking as I think right now. But I felt compelled to share these thoughts. I'll develop them over the course of the next week, maybe have some more next Wednesday. Chairman, I thank you for the time. This is an important conversation because we have to grow. If we're not growing, we're gonna fall behind. We will have to raise taxes. The only reason we've been able to maintain a low tax rate is through our growth. Now, we've not been able to address the additional needs, but we've been able to maintain what we have. And with any citizen groups that would like to talk about it, I'll meet with you, too. I've done that before. I'll do it again. But this is tough for me right now. As presented, Chairman, thank you for the time. Commissioner, thank you for bringing the conversation to us. I think it's important that we have it. I would like to have, I would like to build upon it. I think those are important principles that we need to consider. And let me share this also. This is something I've found myself saying quite a bit recently. I think it's really important that we operate in good faith. I'm not suggesting that any of us here are not. But I believe that when we have these conversations in committee, I think it's really important that, one, we speak words of positive intention. I believe it's very important that we assume positive intention for those who are working with us on these things. I think that's really important. I think it's also important that we build upon ideas as opposed to detracting from them. Let's take a concept. Let's build on it. Let's strengthen those ideas to find a place that we can all, or at least most of us can support, understanding that each of these decisions that we make will have a ripple effect across the rest of the county and other issues. I'll stop. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My vote, my vote counts, like Commissioner Sharp just said, whether we're talking about an issue within the city or we're talking about an issue within the unincorporated areas. Because Hamilton County is one county. And I'm looking for ways that we can work together and not be divisive. So, I don't, I've got an open mind, and I know this group right here, they all hate me. But I have an open mind, and I'm willing to listen to the discussion. And I am listening to the discussion. I've had several phone calls. And I have not made up my mind. So I'm gonna go into this with my eyes wide open, do my homework. Those of you that know me know I do my homework. I do my research. And I'm gonna weigh the pros and the cons here. Commissioner, thank you for bringing this forward, Commissioner Eversol. And Commissioner Sharp is right. This is a conversation that we need to have. We need to have it way more in-depth than what we're having. 2017, we moved the tax rate to build a sewer treatment plant. Property was located. Everything was done. Money was in place. Engineering was ready to go. And what happened was this body, which I was not on it in 18, well, when the vote came up in late 18 or early 19, I was not on it. The money was in place. And we talked about growth. We talked about sewers, and we talked about putting a sewer treatment plant in. This body decided not to put a sewer treatment plant in. At that time, it was gonna be $40 million. I think they told us 38, if I'm not mistaken. And today, that same treatment plant, and I've been asking and looking around, that same treatment plant would be over $100 million. And the problem is, even if we decided to build a treatment plant right now, here today, even if the money was just put in front of us and we decided to build a treatment plant today, it takes a minimum of seven to 10 years to get that sewer treatment out of the ground. But that's just a sewer treatment plant. You still have to run the sewer pipes. You still have to run the infrastructure. Now, I represent District 11, as everybody knows. And I have been having this conversation with a lot of people in my district. And you got to think about that tax equity that David, I mean, Commissioner Sharp's talking about. Because the people in my district, I do have about 16% unincorporated area. But the people that are in my unincorporated area, they don't have a volunteer fire department. There's nothing on that side of town. They don't have garbage service. They pay for their own. And they don't have police protection. They have the sheriff, excuse me, not defend the sheriff. He's awesome, doing a great job. But the rest of my district is either in lookout monitor in the city of Chattanooga. And they pay extra for that. They pay city and county taxes. But District 11 county taxes are going to pay for services, whether they're in the unincorporated area or they're in the incorporated area. So, so that's unfair to District 11, first of all. Second of all, my, the news that I watch, I get a lot of different news. But I saw today, absolutely today, it said Eli Lilly plans a six... Wait a minute. I'm screwing up my phone here. A $6 billion manufacturing facility in Huntsville. 450 quality paying jobs. Gentlemen, we can't say that. We can't say that. Eli Lilly can't come here because we don't have enough sewer capacity. They can't come here. We don't have enough sewer capacity. That's the whole argument here. We don't have enough sewer capacity. We don't have the infrastructure in place. You can't pay for infrastructure ahead of time and hope that these companies are gonna come. It's all gotta come. It's gotta work together. So, they're not gonna look at Hamilton County if we don't have the infrastructure. And we're talking about houses and growth. We graduate 5,000 kids minimum a year from our high schools. And I don't even know how to figure the private schools, public schools, and I don't know how to figure home schools. So it's probably more than that. I'm selfish when it comes to my children. I want my children to stay and find a job and raise their families close to me. I want to be by my grandchildren. And I think that we have the greatest county, not only in the state of Tennessee, but in the South, probably in the country. That's why everybody's wanting to come here. I think I read, I know Tom's here. I think I read in the paper that Chattanooga is the 11th most popular city out of all the cities in the United States. That's for a reason. That's why everybody's flocking here. That's why everybody's coming here. What we have to do is we have to manage growth. We have to manage smart growth. We can't not have growth. Again, I want my children to stay here. I want my grandchildren to stay here. I'd like, and if that's selfish of me, I'm sorry, but I want my children, I want to be around my family. I don't want to have to go to Timbuktu because they went for a job. The other thing is, what we haven't talked about is property rights. The owners of the property have rights. If they own a piece of property, whether it's a farm, whether it's a, whatever it is, if they own property and they've worked their whole life, you know, I've heard that my whole life, ever since my dad, my parents raised me, they said, you got to get a house. You got to build your future by having a house or having, you know, that's your livelihood, right? That's how you're gonna retire. That's how it's gonna pay for you when you're old, is having all your stuff and paid for. You sell it off, you cash it in, you downsize, and you live on that money. That's what I've always heard my whole life. So, what we're also need to talk about is these people that are wanting to sell their property that they've invested in for all these years, they should be able to recoup on their investment. They should be able to prosper. I mean, that's the American dream. The planning commission, and if you don't mind, I'll get off my soapbox, Mr. Chairman, but I've got a couple of questions for the attorney. Is that okay? County attorney, the planning commission, yes or no, is a recommending body?
It is.
So they have no authority on whether we grow or we don't grow?
It makes recommendations to this governing body.
But the final decision is?
This governing body, and then the city's governing body.
So the planning commission can't decide whether we grow or we don't grow? It has to be this body, right?
Correct.
So this body also decides whether we put in a sewer treatment plant or a sewer, even a sewer line for that matter, right? I mean, this body, this body has the authority to put in a sewer treatment plant?
Yes.
I mean, in the infrastructure that it needs?
If it so chose, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Is, is what we're talking about here today, separating the planning commissions, I'm a uniter. I'm for bringing people together, not for separating people. I think that we all need to work together, and if we can't work together, we need to find a way to work together. But my question is, is this even legal?
There is a statute for which you can dissolve regional planning commissions. And this is one of the steps to do so.
There's many more steps to take?
There is. It requires resolutions from each governing body to do so.
From each governing body in the planning agency? So all the municipalities they're a part of? That's what you mean by each governing body, right?
Yes, sir.
So, okay. The other thing I will say, and I know we've talked about, and then I'm done. I know we've talked about, and Commissioner Sharp alluded to it as well. You know, we all have starter classes at one time in our life, and then we move on to the next one or move on to the next one. I have four children, and they're all young adults. My oldest son has... My oldest son has three beautiful babies, I love to death. My daughter's about to get married in the spring. My second son just barely moved out, but he moved into one of our rental houses. And my youngest son still lives with us, he's 20, almost 21 years old. They can't afford a house. My two older sons are civil servants, my daughter works for a doctor. They cannot afford to buy a house. They can't afford to buy a house because houses are so expensive. Why are houses so expensive? Because there's not enough supply and demand. You got to have the supply and demand. On the same token, you got to have the infrastructure in place for that supply and demand. So we got to have a sewer talk, we got to have a road talk, we got to start talking about growth. We can't dodge it because even if we pass this resolution, and I, again, I know you don't believe me, but I'm on the fence here, I don't know, I made a decision. But we have to have this conversation, it's got to be ongoing because we're not doing our future Hamilton County citizens any good or any favors by allowing us not to build a sewer treatment plan or us not to put the infrastructure in. We have got to come together and come up with a better plan and a way to pay for it. We got to get the way to pay for it started. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hilton?
Thank you. I know everyone else has discussed the merits this way or that. My curiosity lays around the mechanics of the resolution. I know much of it is spelled out in the body of the resolution, but I think it might be a healthy exercise to do some type of presentation that talks about what has to happen to walk this through the steps. You know, what, who has to vote, what has to happen, how a new body would interface with the existing body because, you know, the, the unincorporated area meets municipalities all over the, all over the county. How does, how do they interact? How will they plan together? Also, you know, how, what is it going to cost? I think that would be a helpful exercise, at least for education. I know it is, much of it's in the, in the resolution itself, but I think it'd be good to present to the public. And that's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner Beck?
Just a quick question I wanted to clear up. You said the municipalities, so I heard one commissioner says city and county, but all of the municipalities have to agree to this, you said, did you say that?
Each municipality that's currently in the regional planning commission would have to agree to.
How many, is it all?
It is.
Ten of them?
The county, the city, Ridge Side, Lookout Mountain and Lakeside.
Okay, thank you.
All right, real quick, I, I still do have a couple of lights. They are by, people have already commented, so I'm going to jump in here real quick. As presented, we, we need to keep in mind that this is an idea of, of building a regional planning commission or a planning commission for Hamilton County primarily in the unincorporated areas. It is only that, it is only planning. Commissioner Graham pointed this out. No matter what an organization that is advisory brings to this body, this body still votes. We allow the development, we don't allow the development. So we are not talking about an item that we're going to vote on that puts a moratorium on development, that stops development, that prevents development from happening. This, as I read it, and Commissioner Eversole would be best to probably answer the question, but as I read it, it is just talking about reorganizing a planning commission that thinks more about the unincorporated areas than the current one does today. Not about it's going to make us, gentlemen, do, do you need the mic? Thank you. Not something that's going to prevent development from taking place, but something that is going to change the thought process, maybe that's going around some of the advisory that comes in and the communication that this body receives. And that's the way I look at it. This, this resolution does represent the desires of most, if not all, of my unincorporated constituents. I've spoken to many of them, I've had many meetings about it. So I appreciate that it's been, been brought up. There's still, to my colleague's point, a lot of discussion that needs to be had. There's a lot of details that we have to get into about this and there's a lot of other considerations about growth in general, but this does not stop growth, in my opinion. This body still determines what growth takes place, not this committee or commission, depending on how we move forward. With that, I have one more light before we move on. Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you, Chairman. I, I will try to be brief. And I do agree with what you just said. We, we are the final say. It is not controlled by them. I, I do, I don't take offense very easily, but I try to be fair to everyone, I really do. I don't care if you're in downtown Chattanooga, Berkswood, Salcrick, I really try to, Commissioner Beck, a, a, and I also feel like the commissioner of the district knows their district better than anyone else and the needs of their district. Not too long ago, Commissioner Beck said that a tiny home and that was proposed in his community was not appropriate. And, and I listened to what he said and he is the commissioner representing that district and I, and I, I went along with what, uh, with, with him and I think we should. And I, I try to be fair and I think most of us try to be fair and we should be. That was, I'm just saying, I, I hope no one thinks that I'm not trying to be fair because I do truly want to be. Second, the decentralized systems, I've done a little bit of research on, pardon me? I'm sorry, did you need me?
No.
Okay. The decentralized systems that have been advocated for, I've done a little bit of research and I, well, actually I've had someone who's an engineer done more than I have that, uh, found that in Rutherford County, they put in two and one of them has failed, the other one's having trouble, and the county has to pick up the, the difference for that. I, that's ridiculous. $20 million they're having to pipe sewers in to take place for decentralized system. And if, and, and, you know, we can't expect the builders to, uh, put one in and then maintain it in perpetuity. So, so it's going to have to come to us and, and that's what's frightening to me, that my grandchildren will be paying off some of those things. I, I want to be reasonable with that. I am not against growth. I, I am for responsible growth and that includes improving our infrastructure. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Eversole, you want to take the final light?
Yeah, I'm, I apologize to you, Mr. Chairman. We've been going down this rabbit trail. This, this resolution has nothing to do with growth, has nothing to do with, with planning, it has nothing to do with where we're building, not building, zoning code, has nothing to do with that, has nothing to do with home prices, uh, has nothing to do with holding hands and singing the Coke song. All this has to do with is creating a planning commission, and I'll go back to what I said originally, to create a planning commission that has the sole interest of the unincorporated parts of Hamilton County, um, that they come to this body. And not only do they make recommendations on whether to, maybe rephrase this, I want to make sure our attorney hears this, because I think I said this earlier, but evidently I didn't because either some didn't read the resolution or they took it wrong. That, that the planning commission comes to this body and recommends whether to approve or not to approve, and if you do approve, these are some consequences that you're going to have in the future if you do approve it. And, and the reason I say that is, is because we've not been told in the past that if you approve something, here's something that's going to impact you in the future. And I think it's an extra set of eyes that can really help us look at infrastructure issues, school issues in the future by a specific development. So this, nowhere in the resolution does it say stop growth, not build, doesn't say that. Uh, so I don't worry we went down that trail. But I would, I would ask you to look, if you got any questions, please let me know. And maybe we do get the committee to look at it as a whole, I'm fine with that. I think it just merits us looking at it differently, so thank you, Chairman.
All right. Thank you, sir. With that, that is the last item we have as committee as a whole. We will be discussing this a lot over the next week, so there will be plenty of opportunities for those of you out there as well to have this discussion with each of us and for us to continue, uh, whether, you know, it, it warrants the committee looking at it even deeper, that may be what ends up coming out of this and we have continued conversations. So with that, um, coming up, we will have committee assignments, we've got the finance committee, Commissioner Eversole, you have four resolutions, Health and Human Services Committee, Commissioner Baker, you have one resolution, Public Works and Zoning, Commissioner Highlander, you have four resolutions, Rules and Legislative Committee, Commissioner Hilton, you have one resolution. We will go to those committees immediately following this agenda meeting in that order unless otherwise arranged, so.
We'd like Health, the Health and Human Services, we'll meet in the back conference room.
Perfect, at the same time?
Yep.
Okay, great. So Health, all right, so the Health and Human Services Committee, soon as we are done with the agenda, will meet in the back conference room, so those of you that want to attend that, feel free to go back there as well. And then the rest of the resolutions will take an order out here. All right, with that, uh, we will go into announcements. Commissioner Shipley?
No announcements.
Commissioner Baker?
I feel like I should have some, but right now I'm drained, so no announcements.
Mr. Mackey?
Uh, Chair, all I want to say is, I'm hoping that everyone is getting into the Christmas spirit and remember what the holiday is all about. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Beck?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You wouldn't allow me to respond, most of the time we respond when we're called out. But, you know, for the life of me, I don't remember saying anything about any tiny homes in my, in my district. Now, I'm having her to look up now to see if I actually made a statement like that, but I really don't remember it. I know I'm, I'm getting mature now, but I don't remember saying that. So, but I do remember saying that, um, Red Bank was going to borrow some money and pay it back, only $350,000 and pay it back. I do remember saying that. And I remember saying we gave $500,000 to, uh, Wolf, Wolf, Yip, Yip and Meow, and they weren't going to get paid back. I do remember making those two distinctions there, but I don't remember anything about a tiny home, did you? Haven't found anything? Well, I, I don't remember saying anything like that. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for the clarification, Commissioner. Commissioner Sharp?
Thank you, Chairman. Phone doesn't recognize me. I just wanted to announce, I hope everyone willing and able would come out to the city of Red Bank for the Christmas parade. There'll be a Christmas parade and festival on Saturday, the 13th, starts at 3 o'clock to 8 o'clock. The parade begins at 6:00 and we'll be out there having a good time, eating candy and chit chatting with everybody. So if you guys are around, if anyone's around, please come down and we'd love to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hilton?
I just want to thank everyone for coming out to the East Brainerd Christmas tree lighting. Last, last Friday, we had several hundred in attendance or a couple of hundred in attendance. It was a cold night, but we had good participation and we hope to grow it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Chauncey? Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to also wish everyone a good Christmas. Commissioner Beck, if I, if I, my memory fails me, I, forgive me, I remember spoiling on something, I thought that's what it was, maybe it was something else, but forgive me if I used your name in vain, it was not intentional. Uh, I do, I do think it's important that the commissioner from each district is, uh, is listened to closely because he, he understands the problems in his district better than anyone else. I do hope everyone has a safe, a safe Christmas.
Good, sir. Commissioner Eversole?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. The only thing is, College Hill Christmas parade is this Sunday, so I hope everybody can come out and enjoy. And that's all we've got. Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This Saturday as well, we all got a lot of things going on this Saturday, but the Lookout Valley Christmas parade is this Saturday, I think it's our 27th or 28th year in a row that we've done that parade, something like that. It starts at noon, it runs from the elementary, uh, from the high school, excuse me, the middle and high school to Johnny Patton, and then immediately following that at Johnny Patton Center, they're having a Christmas, uh, it's kind of like a crafts and, and, and kind of a craft fair type of thing, they'll be. But for that, we, it went over real well last year, so, so we hope to make that an annual event. Then something that we're doing new, thanks to Matt, we're doing new is we're going to have our Christmas tree lighting. And our Christmas tree lighting celebration will start at 4:00, I'm not exactly sure when we'll actually plug the tree in, but, but it'll be there shortly after 4:00. So everybody's welcome to come out and, uh, if it's going to be cold, bundle up, but if it's going to be raining, it's still happening, so it's rain or shine. So, uh, other than that, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Attorney Varnell?
No announcements.
Or won't? With that, I also have no announcements, so we will move into the point where the public can come forward, discuss any issues other than zoning. You will be asked to start with your name and address and you will have three minutes. Let me explicitly. But before we get started, I, I do want to make one additional comment. Part of the rules are a total of 10 minutes on a specific topic. I don't know how many different topics we may have out there, but if we are discussing potentially the resolution that most of us up here were discussing a little while ago, keep in mind there may be many of you that want to comment, so be mindful of everybody else and their time. All right, with that, please come forward with the name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Sabrina Daniel, I live at 4410 Maryland Drive in East Ridge, 37412. And I'm very supportive of, um, Mr. Eversole's proposal. I feel like that it, it makes sense that there should be some, um, group that concentrates on the areas that are unincorporated versus trying to do the whole baby, you know? So I think that's a really great idea, I hope you'll vote for it. Again, uh, we did chase a lot of rabbits here, so it's just to become a different agency for them to make recommendations that's specific to the area. Can I mention, oh, he's gone, I guess I can. In terms of time, I know we haven't talked about that tonight, but, uh, my suggestion would be people work nine to five. By the time they get out, it's 5:15, by the time they get to their car, it's 5:30, by the time they get here, it's 5:45 or 6:00. If we really want to see more public participation, even though it's inconvenient for really all of us to be a 6:00, then my suggestion would be a 6:00 on a day that's convenient. I was going to say Tuesday and the chairman reminded me that is not convenient. The last thing I would like to say is that I'm running for the school board in East Ridge, which is District 8, and I would appreciate any support that you feel like individually you can give me. Um, I've raised, um, the Lord and I have raised, uh, 8,900 and I'm looking for...
Ma'am, this isn't on the, on the topic.
Oh, okay, all right. Thank you anyway, I appreciate the time.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Mr. Bowles? Name and address, please.
Gary Bowles, 5812 Mountain Pass Drive in Newtawana, I'm not running for anything. So with this resolution, 1225-16, we form a planning commission that addresses the underrepresentation we've experienced when it comes to matters of growth, property zoning and quality of life. The current planning commission is kind of just a glorified agent used by developers to expand in areas where the vast majority of residents believe that infrastructure cannot and will not support the growth. In addition, no real plan is in place to fund and solve the problems and frankly, we have little appetite for the funding, AKA taxes, to support it. Estimates in 2024 state that approximately 110,000 people live in unincorporated Hamilton County. If it were incorporated, it would become the seventh largest city in the state, uh, with the big four along with Murfreesboro and Clarksville surpassing it. There are some of your districts that are totally within the Chattanooga city limits, other contain, others contain municipalities that have their own planning commissions such as College Hill. This does not affect your district since their zoning development will not change, so you have no reason to oppose it since decisions would either remain with the current RPC and associated city councils or use their own separate planning commission. Therefore, I urge you to vote for a separate commission for unincorporated Hamilton County. The current RPC, RPC is unlike most other planning commissions in the state in that it consists of a majority of members who benefit directly from... in that it consists of a majority of members who benefit directly from development. Half of the members of the RPC are appointed by the mayor of Chattanooga. Chattanooga has a different growth model, and many people prefer to live close to the city center and the convenience it offers, and that's their prerogative. The current chairperson has been in place for many years and is a large developer. He routinely talks down to citizens. All one must do is listen to this planning commission and the way it, they pander to developers, and although allowing citizens to speak, largely ignore public comment. It's time for a change. Benchmarking of how other municipalities appoint planning commissioners show that they appoint people that do not generally receive compensation from development. Many are now realizing that unbridled growth is hurting quality of life and are addressing this issue. In seventeen seventy-six, we had the Tea Party because of taxation without representation. Now, in almost twenty twenty-six, this result revolt is growth fixation without representation. Vote for a new way to manage growth in unincorporated Hamlin County, our own planning commission. I'll leave you with Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Ms. Papu, name and address, please.
Yes, you know my name, Glenda Papu. I live in Birchwood. Thank you very much. Um, I want to speak about where I live, living unincorporated. I moved there by choice. I pay for my own garbage pickup. I pay, if my water line goes, I pay for three hundred lines, three hundred yards of line of water to get the line filled back in. I pay my volunteer fire department. Myself, my choice. Anything else that happens. I do that by choice. I don't get, uh, and the sheriff is, and you know, I don't get police protection out there. I have the sheriff out there. It's a choice that I make. And I agree with Dr. Highlander here so much that you need to listen to the county commissioner that represents me. Not the ones that live in the city. I respect what the city does. I love coming to the city. But I made the choice to drive forty-five minutes to come here. I don't have conveniences. That's my choice. Your choice is to listen to the people. Your job is to listen to we the people. I appreciate your opinions, but your opinions don't matter to us. It's our opinions because you represent us. You do not represent, uh, yourselves or the board. You represent we the people. We're the ones that come here. We're the ones that live here. We're the ones that pay the taxes. So I just want to encourage you to keep that in mind. You're a representative. You're not there standing on your own. And I want to say ditto, Mr. Shipley, for what you said. Amen.
Name and address, please.
Kurt Wells, eighteen forty-eight Vandergrift Road, Signal Mountain. Um, the current regional planning commission is broken. Um, earlier this year, Commissioner Baker tried to adopt language allowing county staff to require geotechnical reports in areas known for historical mining activities. This year, the planning commission approved a preliminary plat with multiple houses located above what T-Deck has a level of confidence are two large abandoned underground coal mine excavations. The two mine portals are shown on multiple historical USGS maps. The underground excavations are identified on three other maps in T-Deck's records. Uh, T-Deck visited the site earlier in the year, located one of the mine open portals. Although they did not enter the mine, they stated it seems reasonable to assume that it does lead back into the underground mine works. T-Deck stated they tried to reach out to the owner several times, never received a call back. The current planning commission is broken. If we can allow developers to build houses on mines, and the commission needs to be separated out to protect the health and safety of county voters who reside outside the city of Chattanooga. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis.
Greg Lewis, fifty-five fifty-five Hunter Road. Uh, I just wanted to mention that one of the things we learned when we were doing benchmarking for Plan Hamilton is some of the fastest growing counties in Tennessee utilize a model where they have a completely separate, uh, planning commission for their unincorporated areas. So it, it, it can work and it does work well in some of the faster growing counties in, in Tennessee. So if you want to have more information on that, uh, you can, you can reach out to me. But, uh, I, I support the, uh, the resolution and I hope it passes. Thank you.
Mrs. Hilton, name and address.
Kim Hilton, eighty-six eighteen Snow Hill Road. There are several municipalities in this county that have their very own planning commissions. If that is okay for that, why isn't it okay for the county to have their very own planning commission? It seems only fair, and we appreciate Commissioner Eversol's resolution, and we hope that you will vote for it. Thank you.
Are, are you on a, on the same subject or a different subject?
Different topic.
The rest of y'all? All right. Would you like to jump first, since you're, since you're with this group? Thank you.
Jennifer Duval, Colterville Road, Sail Creek. Um, Plan Hamilton left out unincorporated voices in Plan Hamilton. Plan Hamilton overlaid active producing century farms as subdivisions in the next five years. Unincorporated doesn't plan the city. We are planning for the future through Plan Hamilton. Future generations came here to speak and went to Planning Commission to speak, and they were ignored, and they feel defeated. Uh, that's, that's that on that. And by the way, no farms, no food. We don't have farmland. We can't eat. I'm not into biofood, engineered food or any of that, so. Uh, secondly, I would like to, um, acknowledge Nancy Rucker, the four H director and, uh, four H agent, who's a friend. She recently was awarded the twenty twenty-five Meritorious Service Award at the National Association of Extension Four-H Youth Development Professional Annual Conference. This award recognizes outstanding leadership and professional services to the four H program and to that, uh, National Association of Extension Four-H. So that's a very big deal for Ms. Nancy. Um, Ms. Nancy was not expecting that. She thought that her time had passed. So it would be great. I know, uh, Commissioner Sharp, Commissioner Shipley, uh, Kathy Lennon was here. Some of y'all are on the agriculture board, so please give her a big congratulations. She was very modest and didn't let people know this. Um, the last thing I'd like to bring up is North Fu- North River Future Ready Center, which we saw on the slide that they did have some work. Um, they are new to the Sequoia, uh, building. So this Saturday, they are having the animal science program, which my son is in. Uh, he does half day at Hickson, half day at North River Future Ready Center. They're having a holiday dog wash. So between ten and two P M., if you bring your dogs, as long as they have their vaccinations, you have proof of it. Anyone in Hamilton County can come to North River Future Ready Center and check out the brand new animal science program room and have your dogs bathe for the holiday, and they get cute little scarves and things like that, and they go home smelling really good. It's super fun. Also, they had their barn delivered, so they'll be getting their animals back soon, and that is a huge thanks to Commissioner Shipley because there was an unexpected complication that was unintended, that they should have had their barn back by October, so the animals have been temporarily homed. So thank you, Commissioner Shipley. They got their barn yesterday, and they are working on fencing today and tomorrow, and all of the other, uh, plumbing issues you were able to get resolved for them so that they can have an operational program and have their seniors graduate with the credits and services that they need. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Duval. Uh, Commissioner Highlander, did you want to say one thing about your friend?
Mr. Duval, but thank you. I want you to know that I'm chairman of the Agriculture Committee, and I have sent out a message to the other commissioners who are on the, and we have requested a plaque to be presented. We're going to ask our, our, our beloved county agent Nancy Rucker to come down and do that. It just takes a little bit of time to go through the process to get it done.
I just think, we think the world of her. She, uh, four H, just so y'all know, is so life-changing. Um, my son struggled a lot. Um, you do hear him come and speak, so obviously that does kind of separate him a little bit with a lot of the other kids that are more into games and this and that. He thinks, you know, very differently, more mindfully. He thinks no farms, no food. What's his future going to look like?
Thank you.
Um, so, yeah.
Thank you. I just want, I want you to be aware that we're not overlooking her, and that is in the process.
Oh, no, I don't think y'all are at all. I just think she needs a special shout out.
Y'all can think afterwards. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi again. Melissa Ray, four zero zero six Dearmont Court. Um, I'll start with a quick Save Enterprise Health Nature Park organization update. In two months, our petition is just under twelve thousand signatures to retain all protections on the park. That is over double the number, uh, received to make us a national park city, uh, and it took a year and a half for them to get that figure. It's not a competition, um, but if anything, all these petitions just show that our community gets particularly fired up about conservation of our land, of our land, of our heritage, of our history. Um, but the main message I have for today is this. I hope that everyone is beginning to realize that this is not just an issue for environmentalists. Uh, my co-founder Nathan Griffin has spoken and written at length about how this park benefits us economically. Uh, and we do have plans for a more in-depth economic impact study on the horizon. But for those who have interests deeper than their pockets, but who also may not be inclined toward dirt and snakes, let's talk about culture. Let's talk about history. Did you know the park houses one hundred Corbetta magazines or TNT storage bunkers built by the U.S. military nearly a century ago, hidden under earthen roofs and dotted throughout the park at a precise distance specified to prevent a domino effect of explosions? Did you know that there is nowhere else publicly accessible in the entire United States that has this example of U.S. military history? Nowhere. Did you know that there are untouched Civil War readouts and numerous Civil War foxholes within the portion of the land slated to be unprotected? Several of the foxholes in the park are already listed in the National Register of Historic Places. No one's mentioned these. Did you know this land represents over a century of displacement of black, working class people and families? The Summit Community was progressively displaced from this land and the Old Summit Cemetery. The families with loved ones buried there were fenced off from visiting their dead when the TNT plant was constructed. And did you know that just two years ago, Enterprise was designated as part of the National Recreation Trail System through the National Park Service, a status that entitles Enterprise to automatic letters of support for fundraising and grants benefiting the park? Grants for things like trail and infrastructure improvements, historical interpretation. So how is this park, this absolutely unique asset to our community with Civil War, World War Two, Chattanooga's black history, and all this potential funding, and all these community members standing behind it, somehow on the table for a massive and complicated amputation? This is a place that every one of us has a reason to honor. Um, we have neglected, we've been sleeping on a major cultural asset, one that deserves to be celebrated, one that deserves to be invested in and shared beyond the boundaries of our county. Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Pam Dalton, forty-eight sixty-three Hill Still Circle. Happy to be with you, thank Commissioner. Uh, here to talk about Enterprise South. Um, I moved to Chattanooga in nineteen sixty-eight. And that was when it was not such a nice place to be. I can remember coming across the ridge cut and it was so polluted, you cannot even see the city. Um, we've had visionary leaders that have made our city into a wonderful place to be. Uh, Bob Corker, Claude Ramsey, um, you know, uh, Representative Womp, when he was in, in, uh, Congress. I mean, they all put a lot of time and thought, Lynn Hurst Foundation, the aquarium, Riverfront Park, I mean, just everything. And Claude Ramsey had a vision about that park out there. Um, Volkswagen came in and the park at the same time, and that park was set aside forever. I mean, it is a forever nature park. Uh, there's an interview with Mr. Ramsey where he says it's a sanctuary. And it really is. There's no other park like that that I know of, in our state anyway. And it's the closest thing you could do to really getting up in the Smokies or something of that nature where you see wildlife like that. Um, so if it's, if we're going to take a portion of it, and I have some ideas on maybe what's going over there, and I don't know for certain, and I hope I'm wrong, but I think it's probably a data center or something of that nature. I mean, the, the, I mean, the, it's, they're just a super user of resources. And I know, and I'm not against development, but you've got an industrial park across the street. Why can it not be, why can you not put whatever it's there that's going there? Because you don't spend two million dollars not know what's going there. There was something going there that we know what it is, somebody does, and put it over on the industrial side and leave our park alone. Um, thank you for your consideration. Appreciate it.
Name and address, please.
My name is Arthur Krasinski, uh, three seventeen, White Goat Circle. Longtime listener, first time calling. For about two or three months, I've been that camera up there to you guys. Um, and that's actually kind of what I wanted to talk about. So today I had to go into work early and leave early just to be here today. Um, it is inaccessible, to say the least, to be here, uh, speaking in front of you. By working a nine to five job, um, I'm actually eight to five. I'm lucky I get an hour lunch. But, um, I would really appreciate a later time. And some people have even said that the day might not be the best. Um, if we could look into moving that too, I think we can all agree that it is best for everyone to have an accessible county commission. It's better for you as, excuse me, as commissioners because, uh, you get to be able to hear what your constituents have to say and are better able to represent them. They're more represented as a result. And everybody wins. Uh, the second thing is that I, I go online a lot. Uh, I'm on Reddit. The top two questions, the second most, uh, asked question is, what's that smell? Um, I know it's a strange question, but we have, we, the top answers, top three answers is, uh, the chicken plant, right? Um, the combined sewer system that we have. It's rainwater and sewage. It's an old outdated kind of system. Uh, I, I know Sharp was talking about that. And, um, when it rains too hard, it can, it can overflow, and that can cause an environmental issue, right? And if it doesn't rain for long enough, it sits there and dries and smells. So that's that smell. Uh, the, the third thing, if anyone was wondering, was your upper lip, but you know. And I, I still have about thirty seconds here, but, uh, Commissioner Graham, I, I don't hate you. That's a very strong word. I might dislike some things that you, you do and say, but yeah, that's, we can, we can overcome that, I think. I mean, as a community as a whole, we should be, like you said, coming together.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
I am Beth Loffgren, and I live one oh, one oh, one 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 Meadowstone Drive in Appleson. So, um, I'm just concerned mostly about Enterprise South Nature Park. Um, I moved here fifteen years ago, been in the same house since and raised my kids. I've spent countless hours out there, including the part that's now being called inactive. Um, the Summit Cemetery does have a lot of interesting history. I love old graveyards, so I go out to Pope County all the time and look at old graveyards. It's kind of a weird hobby, but, uh, there's some really neat stuff out there. Um, a lot of this has already been said earlier, but I would just say overall that I just have some questions, and I haven't been able to look at any notes to find them. Um, if McDonald Farm was purchased for partially industrial use, was there not any sort of like study before we purchased it with taxpayer dollars to? It was. So I'm trying to understand like why we're doing this land swap thing now. Why is that on the table with that? Um, the deed I read with Enterprise, it's forever. Um, I have reached out to the National Park Service. I've done all kinds of things just to reach out, just to kind of figure out like what's going on here. I think it sets a danger. I think it sets a dangerous precedent for land protection in the future. Last but not least, I just don't think two wrongs make a right on this, and I do like Eversole's proposal about the commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make it brief. Chris Pratt, five six one six Christie Lane in Uta Wana. Being an Uta Wana native, I spoke about them a month ago about the, about the Enterprise South protection. A few weeks ago, we had a, we had a walk out there. It was a miserable Sunday from one to three. There were still about fifty people that joined in, and a lot of people that came for that walk had no idea what was in those woods. And then some said, you know, we've walked right through here, but we'd had no idea about the history. All I wanted to say tonight is we're going to have another one on the twentieth of December, Sunday from one to three. It'll be about two and a half miles. We're going to be joined by part of the Sierra Club, the Cherokee Chapter. Come out and see what it's about. History is what this country's about. We want to protect it, keep it, and let's just try to do our part. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public discussion? Well, then, we're going to move into committees. Chairman Eversole, or former Chairman Eversole.
We're going to go into finance, but we're going to have about a one-minute delay.
We just need to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.